And continue with the meeting. Welcome back, we are now on item 12. The subject is a status report on the Valco Town Center SB 35 Development Project. You know, this item has been met with a great deal of interest from the public. And on behalf of council, I wanted everyone to know that it is our sincere attempt and desire to make sure that there is transparency here, that there's open communication. But you know, first and foremost, that there's the ability to deliver optimal safety in public health. And so, in that vein, we have certainly, you know, appreciated the efforts of the community as well as our staff in addressing the issues of the current project here. So Greg, I understand that you'll be providing the staff report and presentation, and so please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce myself as the presenter of this item. I'm Greg Larson, the interim city manager, and I will be providing the staff report. The PowerPoint was just distributed to the city council and posted on the city website and will be sharing it tonight because as this item was put on the agenda for tonight, just last Wednesday, it's been fast breaking. And in fact, we have some new news through meetings we held today that I'll be sharing with the council and public at the end of my presentation. So Madam Clerk, if we could share the PowerPoint?
Are you seeing the PowerPoint right now?
I am not, but maybe others are.
We can see it on our, or at least I can see it.
Just let me know when to advance it.
Pulling up the slide. Here's our maybe, there it is, thank you. Okay, this is the SB 35 project, as the mayor indicated, it's an agenda item 12, your last substantive item on the agenda. Next slide, please. So I probably don't need to describe the project location, but just for complete purposes, both sides of North Wolf Road, below I-280, above Stevens Creek Boulevard, as pictured on this graphic. It was originally developed in the seventies as a Valco mall with 1 million square feet of retail, and then it was acquired by the current property owners in 2014. If we could go forward. Our presentation tonight will be to review the staff report that the council and public have had since the end of last week in four key areas, background information, progress to date, challenging issues that remain, and the project extension issue. I then want to present in a little more detail, the supplemental staff report that was distributed earlier today in response to questions received in advance from the city council. And then there is some new information that we received in meetings today I wanted to share for the council and public. And I'll just be sharing that new information that is germane to your discussions tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk, we can move on. So the original Valco mall I've described briefly, it was anchored by Macy's, Sears, and J.C.'s Penny, and included two automotive centers that are relevant to some of the issues that have emerged. A portion of the parcel through a number of years was divested to the Hyatt House Hotel, and unused parking lot, and other uses. Since then, it has gone through an interesting history since 2014, 2015. There have been multiple proposals developed for the Valco mall, including a specific plan that was both adopted by the city council and subsequently repealed by the city council, as well as three separate voter-initiated referenda. And it's somewhat ironic that the probably two primary staff speakers tonight are the new city attorney and myself, as your new interim city manager, who did not live through all of that history, which most of the people on the screen probably have. But I do think we bring some fresh eyes and analysis and perspectives to support the council's consideration of the issues before it in the past and for the future. What's particularly relevant to this project was the passage of State Senate Bill 35 back in January 2018. It allegedly was adopted by the state to promote the development of housing, and in particular affordable housing, to meet the housing crisis of California. And what it provided for was the elimination of CEQA review for certain projects at the local level. And on CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act has evolved over time in California, it has been a primary tool used by communities, councils, and project applicants to ascertain and mitigate environmental, toxic air quality, land use, recreational, and many, many other impacts caused by a variety of developments. However, SB 35 waived CEQA for projects that met its conditions. And in fact, it's at a very strict streamlining deadline of a maximum of 180 days for ministerial review to be concluded to determine if a project will be approved or not, using only objective standards. So none of the judgments that communities and councils and county boards and supervisors has historically made for most development projects to meet the best needs of their community. So SB 35 greatly tied the hands of communities throughout California. And in fact, the project that was submitted subsequently for Cupertino was one of the first and one of still the largest SB 35 projects in California. That project was submitted in March 27, 2018, and was approved by the then acting city manager on September 21, 2018, within, right at the 180-day deadline of approval as specified by the state. Under the approved project, the Valco project will consist of up to 2,402 residential units, half of them affordable, up to 486,000 square feet of retail, and up to 1,981,000 square feet of office. And while this project was approved under state's SB 35, it's somewhat ironic in that using some of Valco's own estimates, it's anticipated that this project will create 8,700 new jobs, which far exceeds the new housing being provided on site. So even though SB 35 was intended by the state as a means to attacking and dealing with the state's housing crisis, this first, this project, one of the first approved under SB 35, actually exacerbates the housing crisis here in Silicon Valley. What I would like to do on the next slide is to go over some of the progress to date on this project since it was approved by the city in 2018. First and most significant has been the soil investigation and remediation work that has finally started. While through various documents, we believe the soil contamination issues have been known by the property owner and others dating back to at least 2016, the project has just engaged with the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health earlier this year to make tangible and meaningful steps forward on dealing with these issues. We'll be talking much more about this in later parts of my presentation. Second, the fire station location has been identified. And both of these first two issues are critical because the city does still retain authority and responsibility for ensuring and preserving public health and safety for the residents of Cupertino. And as the fire department identified, Valco was a city in a city, and having a fire station was absolutely necessary to meeting the health and safety needs, not just for workers and visitors and residents on Valco, but for the broader community, so there aren't impacted response times to that development. Fortunately, the property owner and the fire department have reached an agreement on a fire station location and are proceeding to prepare the documents that ultimately the county board of supervisors will have to approve. Your city has been processing diligently the building permit applications that have been coming forward from the project. Two have already been approved, although one of them is on hold, given the Department of Environmental Health review of toxics on the site. We have three other building permits that staff has submitted comments to the project owner that they've responded to. We are continuing that review. And while we suspect one or two of those may be held up by the county environmental toxics review, we are doing our due diligence to continue to that review. And updates on all of the building permits are found on the city's website. We're also pleased to see that there's been significant progress with Cal Water, not just the original water supply determination, but also making sure that the utility service network is being designed and reviewed by Cal Water with the payment of appropriate fees. And last, the city is continuing its work with the project owner to prepare the agreements that are required of all projects of this size and scale, be it for the subdivision improvement agreement that goes along with the mapping, or the below-market rate housing agreement to ensure that those 1,201 units are meeting the affordable housing needs of Cupertino and beyond for as many years as possible. So that's significant progress that has been moving ahead. Let's move to some of the challenging issues that remain. First, the green roof, which was a highlight of the original project, submitted and approval, and has been discussed extensively, has many ramifications for this project going ahead. It is so massive and so high that it creates unique issues that the city has never addressed before. It has parkland space, both private and excessive publicly accessible space determinations that are important, and that also impact fees. It has stormwater, and runoff, and drainage, and water demand issues that need to be addressed and understood. And it even has structural considerations, are the footings and the structural support for the green roof being planned in a way that the city can be assured of its health and safety obligations. To address those issues, the city has requested of the project applicant an all-hands meeting so that we can address all these issues to further our understanding of the green roof, since it not only covers virtually all of the project, but impacts virtually all of the project, and will be a very significant issue for our community, and is one that we need to understand more to be able to quickly and effectively and efficiently process this proposal. We also have learned of potential project modifications that have to be addressed within the context of SB 35. Your staff, on behalf of any project that comes forward, ensures that it's in conformance with the council or other regulatory-approved project that was originally approved. We have identified some issues that were in discussion with the property owners, and we suspect there may be many more that require a project modification process that lives up to the letter and intent of SB 35 without depriving the community of its obligation to meet health and safety needs and considerations. And last, there are impact fees. As documented in the staff report, we've identified over 125 million in traffic park land and housing impact fees that would normally be collected on a project of this size and scale by strict application of the city's fee specifications. The applicant believes they own far less than that, and those discussions and trying to understand each other's perspective are underway. However, any fee waivers beneath what the municipal code and city practice requires would have to come to the city council for review and approval in public session. So those will be three challenging issues. I will also highlight, as you'll hear later, the SB, or the soils contamination investigation and remediation issue is now a rising challenging issue, but I'll talk more about that shortly. There's also been some concern about the SB 35 development project extension. The original SB 35 required that a project's approval lasts for three years, as long as there's been commencement of vertical construction. But SB 35, if we could go to the next slide, please. Also provides that there can be a one-year extension with substantial progress on the project. As indicated in the staff report, both Valco, and more recently, the state Housing and Community Development Department disagree with the city's analysis of what SB 35 requires in terms of the three-year clock on the project, and our city attorney can speak more to that issue later, if you wish. However, I believe we do have resolution that any extension decision will be by the city manager, as the original project approval was done by the interim city manager at that time. Our preliminary analysis, it's not final, is that the state standards for substantial progress are being met, but we're still waiting Valco's request for an extension and their justification of that extension documenting that substantial progress has been made. I should have highlighted at the beginning of my presentation that the staff report was simply a summary that I prepared of the extensive attached documentation in the attachment to the staff report. We tried to distill nearly 20 pages down to three to focus the council's and public's discussion on what we believed were the key issues for this update to be presented to you and the council tonight. Excuse me. But I would like to now move on to, and sorry I ran over that quick, covered nearly 24 pages total in 10 minutes, but let's jump to more recent information that was provided today. So if we could go to the supplemental staff report. I've categorized my responses to numerous questions into three broad categories, just to hasten the, my staff time and turn it over to council and public discourse as quickly as possible. The three are organization, the soils investigation and remediation work, and then prior impending approvals. Next slide, please, Madam Clerk. So organizational, source and preparation of the status report. This is what was covered in the first couple of questions, and actually one or two later on in today's supplemental staff report. City council members had raised concerns about a need for there to be improved public information regarding the Valco project, particularly given the well-known September 21st three-year deadline that SB 35 imposed on this project. City staff worked diligently through the first half of next week to find a separate weekday council meeting night to have this discussion, believing it warranted additional preparation time, as well as its own evening meeting, given its importance to the city of Cupertino, residents, and council. However, there were no weekday meetings that were available that could be held between tonight and September 21, your next regularly scheduled council meeting. So I recommended to the mayor, and he approved, that we place this item on tonight's agenda. And I do want to apologize that the original staff report did not go out in the agenda packet, and that today's supplemental report went out later than I'd hoped. I had hoped to get it out by 12 noon, and we missed that by a couple hours, and that there's even more new information that just arose this afternoon that I'll be sharing with you shortly. Who reviewed and drafted the staff report? As identified in the supplemental, I requested both outside consultants and council to prepare the first draft of the report, which they did with assistance from city staff over the past month. The attachment was then subsequently edited by staff from both Public Works and Community Development, as well as by the city attorney and myself. I will point out, though, that from that original draft, from the outside council and consultant, that there were no substantive modifications to that information, and what you have received is a largely complete packet of information. The summary report, as I indicated earlier, however, after I did my final edits on the attachment, I just couldn't send that forward as, as the document that everybody would be expected to memorize and be prepared with. So I took Wednesday night, most of the night, to draft a summary of that in multiple iterations to try to condense it down to the core issues that I'm presenting to you. That draft that I prepared was then reviewed by and edited by staff from Community Development and Public Works, as well as the city attorney. However, as much as I have involved outside council and consultants, other city staff and the city attorney, I do own responsibility for both the staff report and the attachment, in that if judgments needed to be made, they were my final judgments, and I will respond to those if you so request. I did also want to clarify in response to one question received from council, that to the extent any legal opinions were included in the staff report, I am not an attorney. I don't profess to be attorney. In ninth grade, I chose a career path of city management, not being an attorney, and I've stuck with that for well over four. So I'm not a city attorney, but any legal opinions have been reviewed by your city attorney, and most all of them by your outside council as well. Good question, why was information on the September 21st, 20 extension deadline included? We believed it was necessary to be fully transparent. This council, in all of their discussions publicly and privately with me, has embraced the concept of public transparency on most issues before the city, as were allowed by law, and we thought it was important to present where we were on the extension decision, even though that decision tonight is premature, because we don't even have the extension request yet. But this was our last chance to present the information to the public, so we chose to do so this evening. There was specific questions raised about two websites and information on this project. One was the county accessory website map. A constituent had an inquiry that was forwarded to us by a council member, and the concern was that the maps on the county accessory website were incorrect, and they're not, they just serve a different purpose. Those maps are solely for taxation purposes, relying on parcel number determinations for that purpose, and easement information than title records, and come from Title Record Research and Reviews. However, the city's Valco website does indeed have some incorrect information on it, as documented in the staff report. There has been information that was put on the website some time ago, and staff has been reluctant to make changes to prior postings because there was concern about being viewed as tampering with the information that had previously been posted. I would encourage, when staff will do it, whether directed or not, unless the council disagrees, our inclination is to use this update as an opportunity to update the website and to bring it up to date with the most current and accurate information we have now, and to archive the old information to the greatest extent possible, so that people aren't having to read one document and see it corrected by a later document, but they can see the current state of information we have available. We believe that increases public transparency and accessibility. A question was raised about the recommended council action, and I just used language from another jurisdiction, which was to accept the council report. We were not recommending any specific council action tonight. In fact, given nothing is before you otherwise, no action is required, except it was really just to receive the report. The council could choose any other word they find appropriate, be it acknowledge or receive, or simply not to take any action at the end of this council's discussion. That's up to the council to decide, not your staff, but I just wanted to be clear why we chose that word. So that concludes the organizational issues that were in the supplemental report today. Next slide, please. And this is to be soils investigation and remediation, and I decided I was not expert enough to talk through all of these issues, so I just used a single graphic that presents the issue. And if we could go to the next slide. I do not expect anybody to be able to read this anywhere. However, you can read it in detail on the GeoTracker website. And what is, this is information that comes from the property owner's own research by their consultants that they've uploaded to the GeoTracker website, that the County Department of Environmental Health is using as one of many documents to assess what further investigations may be needed on site to determine what remediation or other actions may be required to protect public health and safety. I find this map interesting, after it was pointed out to me in talking to one of our technical experts, is that it shows a larger breadth of sites across the west side of the property than we had seen in prior documentation, and that some of those sites aren't easily linked to known sources of potential contamination, the automobile center that was previously on this side of the property. It also shows more contaminants, types of contaminants than we knew existed on the site, and possibly most significant, it shows that at least one of the contaminants is significantly over the residential threshold of what's allowed for that contaminant on the site. So I mentioned earlier that while we were pleased with the progress made, that after several years of apparent inaction on dealing with the soils contamination, that the property owner had entered into a voluntary agreement with the County Department of Environmental Health to start what is now a mandated and regulated soils cleanup process. That looks like it's going to be more extensive work than we had thought when that project was first launched earlier this year. I would encourage people who want to track this issue to look at the documents on the GeoTracker website. It's also linked on the city website, so you can get there, do it from there. Next slide, please. Prior impending approvals. As documented in several different questions throughout today's supplemental, it is your staff's and attorney's interpretation and understanding that the council's approval back in 2018 cannot be reversed or rescinded, and just stating that directly, so there's no question. And the extension request, as I've mentioned previously, has not yet been reserved, so it's premature to make a decision on whether that extension should be granted or not. Third, project modifications will need to be considered through a process as allowed or specified in SB 35. So those will be future decisions that need to be considered, that are not before you tonight, but that we're well aware of and are tracking. Next slide, please. Additional new information. We had the opportunity to meet with county fire today, just to check in on the progress of the project from their perception, and they actually reported to us that after reading the staff report, they did have a couple minor suggestions to it. For example, right now, they're thinking it's only going to be two days that they need, not three for that fire station. And while they want the fire station to accommodate four personnel on site, their current standard throughout the county fire department system is only three personnel. So it was minor changes like that that the fire department raised to us, that we'll certainly incorporate in future analysis and discussions. We also had a meeting with county environmental health today, that I was able to join a portion of, and probably the most significant new information is that county environmental health made it clear that their current regulatory oversight just applies to the entirety of the west side of the project, on the west side of Wolf Road. The east side would go through the same process of the project owner entering into a voluntary agreement, if there is any prior documentation of contaminants or soil contaminants or potential contaminants on site, but that process has not yet been initiated. So I did want to provide that clarification. And I will share, county department of environmental health could not provide a prognosis, they're really just starting their detailed document review of the investigation. They're really just starting their detailed document review of the investigatory information that has been posted already by the project applicant. However, typically of a project of this scale and size, it wouldn't be uncommon for this four to six week investigation and review of documents to lead to an investigatory order to conduct further research to make sure that the full scale, scope, and source of contaminants is known so that then appropriate actions can be taken by the property owner under DEH regulatory oversight. And those actions could include no further action if there's nothing of substance or concern found in some or all of the site. There could be simply mechanical solutions required if contaminants were found to come from off-site sources that the property owner was not responsible for, and the responsible, the property owner's responsibility is to ensure that isn't continuing and that the current residents and users of the site are protected. Two, all the way to full remediation of any toxic sources or contaminants on the site. So that range of estimates and really got no estimation of the timeline forward, other than that the document review will likely take four to six weeks, and then there'll likely be more investigation required. So that was the uh substance of today's meeting with um county environmental health. I also wanted to share with you that there are amendments to SB thirty five that are working their way through the legislative and gubernatorial process, and some of these amendments would have a direct impact potentially on the VAALCO project if they are ultimately implemented. Uh, it would extend the three-year approval to May twenty twenty-three, basically overcoming what we believe is a current statute limitation that has the project approval expire September twenty-first. It would expand the definition of progress to not just be vertical construction, but demolition and other permitting activity. It would allow greater timelines for modica- modifications to be considered, but also to specify the maximum timelines for modifications. And it would limit further review to uh the prior objective standards, not new objective standards. And these are high-level summaries, just in bullet points of what was seen in that legislation that could impact the VAALCO project, but we have already been in touch with your Legislative Review Committee, Vice Mayor Chow and Council Member Moore, and they've agreed to a special meeting on Monday to consider the legislation in more detail and to advocate a position for the city in keeping with your legislative policies. And uh, that's what they'll do at that regularly, or now specially scheduled meeting, I believe it's for ten thirty on Monday, and we'll have a more in-depth analysis from our legislative consultant on both the legislative history of this bill, in terms of supporters, prior public comment, and any changes made to it over the life of the legislation, as well as to actions going forward. And that will all be subject to your committee's uh decision. Next slide, please. That concludes staff report. We've covered a lot in a short period of time, but uh we did want to make sure the public was aware of the new information we provided council today, and many on your staff remain available to answer any of your questions because I am not the technical expert on this in any way, shape, or form, um, not only your city attorney, Chris Jensen, but we also have staff from Public Works and Community Development who are on the line as analysts to answer questions you may have. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and I'll go with hands to ask any questions of Gregor's staff with regard to this update. And, you know, be- before I call any hands, you know, I, I do want to, I, I do want to say that, you know, out, out of all these uh, these bills, one thing that is very clear is that the legislature uh and the state haven't taken away the uh responsibility um and uh authority of a local jurisdiction to ensure the public health and safety. And, you know, I, I think that is uh something that's very clearly within the obligation of the local authority, and um I, I think it's unfortunate that um we would be in a situation where it would be potentially questioned, um, but as a result of um a, a lot of good work here, uh, we do have um the ability to assess the fact that there are significant contaminant levels, uh, toxic contaminant levels on the site, and um you can read it in the, in, in the, in the more detailed uh report accompanying the staff report. Uh, there was, you know, clearly an attempt to self uh regulate a cleanup of um other contaminant levels um before the currently known um contaminant levels uh were, were known. And so, you know, this is an ongoing process. Uh, I appreciate the city manager as well as staff uh working with us and uh making sure that this is, is transparent. I think uh, at, at this point, it's, it's very clear that uh we need to be very careful with regard to the fact that there are elements of this uh project that are unprecedented, not only the entitlement process, but with regard to the structure, um, with regard to, you know, various public safety features. And so, um, you know, I want to assure everyone that this is not something that um any of us are taking lightly, and I don't think that we should be pushed or bullied into um trying to accelerate a process that clearly is designed to not just promote the public safety and welfare, but also to optimize the uh potential success of the project itself. So, you know, I, I don't see any uh, uh, hands raised from uh council. Uh, I, I, I think that it is a, um, a, a, a good idea to allocate a, a good amount of time for public comment. It's been a while since we've had um the ability to hear from the public on this. I, I think this is a good checking in point. Uh, Council Member Moore, you do have your hand raised, and so I will yield the floor to you for questions of our city manager and staff.
Um, okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm, I'm curious about uh the, the mentioning of the twenty sixteen date and uh what was, what was revealed at that time? Um, and it sounded as though the developer had information uh that wasn't shared. Uh, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that uh to begin with, and then I, I'd, I'd like to actually understand the timeline of, of how we are at this point uh with the, the developer in April requesting regulatory oversight and, um, you know, how did we get to this place?
And Greg, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the twenty sixteen date, I'll have to get back to the mayor and council on the specific source of that, but that was the earliest date I'd been informed that there had been any documentation whatsoever on potential contaminants on site. Um, not that it was reflected in the project application of twenty eighteen, and I'm not sure when those documents first came forward, but we would be willing to prepare a timeline on the city's judgments of toxic issues on the site. And I think the mayor or council can speak better to the raising of the uh remediation issues earlier this year.
I, I, I think that we do owe um a, a, a good amount of thanks, and you, you know, I, I, I use the term "we" very expansively. I, I think at the end of this, uh, it's to everyone's benefit, uh, every member of the public, um, you know, certainly council staff, the applicant, to make sure that uh this is a site that adheres to um all requirements for contamination cleanup and uh making sure that any, you know, toxic materials that um that harm the public safety are, are just not there. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, um, y- y- you know, particular people on council uh get, get attacked for what they do without really um a, a fair step back and um the ability to take a look at what it is in the process that, that questioning and that, that pushing, you know, in effect does. And I think a member of the public, you know, spoke very eloquently about it earlier, you know, and, and thank Councilmember Moore for the last uh item and being very assiduous about looking at, you know, particular features uh of maps and uh reading the fine print, so to speak, and, and that exact kind of uh approach and, and, and work has led to the fact that um we have a, a regulated cleanup going on right now and, and an ongoing process of testing the soil that simply was not there um previously. And, uh, you know, the r- results speak for themselves, you know, the PCE levels on a particular area right now, I believe, um, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this staff, um, we're getting numbers that are apparently more than three hundred times over the threshold of uh residential, um, you know, levels uh that, that are e- acceptable. Um, so, you know, these are not, these are not minimal um increases over threshold levels. So um i- i- it's an ongoing process, um, and so, um, you know, I, I, I think that we should really be looking to uh try to not, um, you know, not, not, not to erode each other or, or tear each other down, but realize that there are, you know, particular um roles in the process. So for example, when we're pointing out, look, you know, i- if, if there's, i- i- there's a lot more need for housing created than housing that's actually created, th- then it is, it's a legitimate point to say, and it's a point that's been made since the very beginning. Um, it, it doesn't warrant attack. I, I don't think it warrants, um, you know, these prolonged kinds of, um, you know, lobbying efforts, uh consolidation of, you know, all sorts of, um, y- y- you know, vituperation from many sectors that at the end of the day, you know, we're all working together trying to address uh issues and crises, um, and just very, various problems that we have. So, y- you know, in order to make this a successful overall endeavor, we have to work with agencies that are looking at issues like, you know, contamination, fire safety, accessibility, transit, congestion, and, and, and all of that, you know? I, I don't think it needs to be reduced to, um, you know, soundbites and, and, and essentially mutt-slinging. Um, I've got a couple of other hands raised here, uh, one from Vice Mayor Chow and Council Member Willie. Vice Mayor Chow? And you'll, you'll need to unmute your mic as well.
Okay. So I think this is something um some member of the public asked. City manager addressed it a little bit, but I, I hope to get more uh detailed answer because everyone will be asking about this. So the one eighty day approval uh report of SB thirty five has this statement that the applicant or property owner is responsible to verify all pertinent property data, including but not limited to property boundary, locations, building setbacks, property size, building square footage, any relevant easements and or construction records. Any errors of any property data may invalidate this approval and may require additional review. So could the staff um confirm, were there no error discovered so far, or there were errors discovered, but they were not significant enough that you think in the approval could be validated?
My understanding is that there were either not sufficient to warrant um reversal of the prior approval, or that the timeline since those errors were discovered have, that was so far back that there's not time now for the city to correct them this late after the fact. Um, for example, if there was an approval in twenty eighteen and it was based on information that was apparent to the jurisdiction and not acted upon shortly after that approval, it may be too late now to go back and adopt it, but we could certainly turn or legal advice to the council subsequent to this meeting on that matter.
Yeah, because this statement didn't provide a that the city has to find the error in time, or is there usually, for example, if a property owner, not this one, I mean hypothetically, someone provided something in error, either intentionally or unintentionally, and then the error is found one or two years later, um, wouldn't that invalidate, would that invalidate an approval normally?
Certainly not at this point, three years later, and the city attorney is unmuted.
Yeah, so, so tha- tha- thank you, Greg. So, um, so I, I'll answer this question um slightly differently. I mean, this, this, this quite, so, I mean, this condition reflects, you know, a, a process of, of, of project review and plan check, you know, by which the uh, the uh, the, you know, the applicant provides the city information and city staff in, in different departments, in, including CDD, Public Works, um, review that information and, and confirm that the project that's being designed confirms to the approved project. Um, an example of this is, is, you know, a discussion of building setbacks that we are having in the connection of the foundation per- permit app, building permit application for the foundation of part of the project. And, and it's, it's, it, it, it's, it's not that we have discovered an error there, it's that because we have asked for more information to confirm that the, the applicant is building the project as proposed, and i- if they're not, um, as, as Greg alluded to in his presentation, um, their remedy is to seek a, a, a project modification if they wish to go forward with the construction. So, um, so, 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 so that, 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 that's, that's, that's the process that's being used, and I think it's the standard process for this kind of project.
Then why is this statement even there in the approval report? If, um, the, it says this misstatement is there, it's there for a purpose. So if three years is too late, then when is not too late for this statement to be applicable to a project?
Yeah, and, and, and I'm not aware of any errors in property data per se, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You know, by property data, I mean, the, you know, the, the size of the property or location of easements. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware, aware of those, those kind of errors at this time.
Building square footage, I think some people had uh um contested that.
Right, I understand that. Um, I, I, you know, I, I'm not sure that that, that, that's property data.
Mm-hmm. That's cause, that's listed here. And any relevant easement, I think there was some issue with easement too. Anyway, this is something I have to ask because people want to know. The next one is regarding the extension, and I think the government code said, at least the code now, they are changing it by day that I don't know. This is how democracy works in California state, change the state bill every day to fit one particular project. Anyway, according to the current government code, uh, to grant the one-year project extension, the project may, must provide proof with documentation that there has been significant progress towards getting the development construction ready. Um, so I went through the staff report that, I will go through later in more detail, I have more detailed question, but for everything that's listed in the staff report appears to be worked down by our city staff, not by the project applicant, from the fire station, from the clean up, from, it seems that every one of those items are things the city staff pushed them to get done. Maybe I'm getting, not getting the full picture, but my perspective, based on the information I have so far, I got this idea, they say, oh, I submitted the permit in two thousand and eighteen, then they expect to do nothing and the permit should be approved. But then according to the staff report, they actually didn't really complete anything until January twenty twenty-one. Even then, it's not complete, but the staff issued the permit. Even then, it's not complete, but the staff issued the permit with the condition cleanup is done. So basically, there are a lot of progress done, not by them, by the city staff. So why do we consider there is significant progress toward construction? Then my question would be, what would be the timeline of the project? How, when do they expect, what will be completed by end of two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty five, two thousand, so that we know there is significant progress? Significant has to be measured against what's considered a complete, right? So I am, I don't see significant progress made by the project applicant so that I can see they really have an intent to want to finish this project. But I I can, I feel they are stalling, but then they are telling everyone the city is stalling, so I'm confused though. And also I'd like to know, with so much city staff time and legal fee going into trying to get this progress, who is paying for our staffing time and legal costs? Are are the residents covering that? Sorry, a lot of pressure.
And many of these that we did not get in advance, we won't be able to answer tonight, but we are recording them to get back.
Okay. Yeah, so main thing is, what significant progress was ma- was made by the project applicant to get the development construction ready? I'd like to know. Because I understand the report was written by staff, probably is perspective from city staff, things are done by them. Maybe there are a lot of things done by the applicant, but I don't know. And then at least answer the cities, the staffing time and legal fee. Are we getting reimbursed for any of the extra time we spent trying to make progress?
There are fees collected for plan check for each permit. Whether those fully cover the costs that are being incurred by the attorney, myself, outside council and staff is unlikely. But we are also responding to council and public requests for information and consideration, which obviously aren't required to pay fees for those services and support. In terms of the prior item, I do know that we are awaiting the property owner's application for extension, and we would expect them to provide justification of why they feel they've made substantial progress on the project. And our determination will be made based on their submittal, and that's when we would be in a better position. But just using the language that was provided in the slide, provided to the vice mayor and shared, while this may be new information from later and what appeared at that time, this property owner has filed for five building permit applications, as was noted in the attachment to the staff report.
Let's uh
Those all three did.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that doesn't mean they have provided enough information. So if the project applicant, the property owner had been upfront and really be proactive in doing the environmental cleanup, do everything necessary to get the project construction ready, there won't be as much city staff time and legal fee spent on this project. But we had to now because they are not doing it, right?
Thank you. Thanks, Vice Mayor. I I'm tracking time here to make sure that we don't overly extend. So I'm gonna call on Councilmember Willie, followed by Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, city manager. You know, I I truly believe this is a long overdue update. I mean, we're going into three years. I would have expected six month updates, and then they could have been much smaller and and getting the community up to to speed on where things are. Can we quick jump back to your map that showed the contaminants? The one you said you don't expect anybody to be able to read it, but that they can find it on the GeoTracker? So, you know, this i- in a huge way is new information. Uh, on the city council, this is a ministerial approval. We're not part of the the process, and we're not allowed to interfere with it. And I believe we've adhered to that, to to the letter of the law. So here, I see this, and wow. Now, the question that I have on this is that the east side area with JCPenney's, I'm not seeing any any indicators. I would have expected to see some boxes that some tests were done, maybe nothing found. What's the status on the JCPenney site? You know, I mean, three years in, what's the status on the JCPenney site? This this other area really shocks me. So please take that as a note. I mean, if you can give us an update tonight, that would be great. Now, if I look at the overall map that I can't read here, but it shocks me. If you could go back to your very second slide that showed the aerial view, if you can enlarge that, look at that residential area that surrounds this this site. Look at the amount of resident. Why are we here on the city council? We're here to represent the resident. Without us being here, there would be no no oversight, no checks and balances. As I go back in memory, we received a lot of emails from residents in those areas about the the dust and dirt that directly got deposited on them and their properties. I think the city needs to make sure that they do an investigation of the affected residential areas for what has already transpired. Going forward, there can't be any excuse for for shoddy workmanship or or hiding things. We're here to make sure the residents of our community are safe and protected. And so I'm I'm kind of shocked tonight, I really am. I think there needs to be an investigation to to identify all the affected people and let them know that they conceivably need to be notified about what they've been exposed to. And going forward, health has got to be first and foremost. Build the project as fast as you can. Do not cut corners when it comes to the community's health. So I sure hope there will be another update. If not in three, then six months. And I hope we will have a couple of slides to identify what what's the status on the JCPenney parcel? And what type of history do we have on the amount of of dust and dirt that's been affecting the community? For which today, I don't think there's any record of it. So I'll leave my my comments at this point to to that. For for people that have had family members, neighbors that have succumbed to to cancers and things of that nature, health is not something we sacrifice. So so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Way. And then we'll circle back to our interim city manager Larson.
I, Mayor Paul, it is it is okay if if the interim city manager would like to answer something that John, Councilmember Willie's stated. I I'd be interested to hear it myself, but it's your prerogative.
Okay, well, since you're since you're 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 in control of the floor, I'll move it over to an inquiry to Greg. Did you want to speak to anything that, no, I I see you shaking, but I can't hear. Okay, I I can't actually hear what you're saying, although I can sort of try to read lips, but let let me go back to
Just to one point, just to one point the councilman raised. And that is that the information on that map that I presented is new information that wasn't available previously. That is from the project, the property owner's consultant. The report is dated, I believe, July thirtieth. And then it was loaded up on GeoTracker, I believe, just in this month. And I was not made aware of it till last week, and we are providing it to you at nearly the earliest opportunity we could. So I did want to be clear on that information not being in any way hidden. I think we're trying to do the exact opposite, and I just wanted to clarify that to the council and public.
Great, thank you, Greg. Okay, well, Councilmember Moore, take it away.
Okay, um, thank you. I just wanted to reply back on us, uh, some of the questions that the vice mayor had and that, to to my knowledge, staff did no review on the square footage prior to the approval. They received the final plan packet around September nineteenth, and there it's two hundred and sixty pages long. And it was, in my estimation, barely enough time for them to stamp each page approved and and finalize it. So there, when when I reviewed it, I found several issues with the square footage. But you have to understand that the project, when it originally was submitted, the way square footage was being calculated was was a simple, what's the area of each floor? And adding it up. Now, after the first submittal, they provided supplemental information, June first of twenty eighteen, doing the counting that way. And then June nineteenth, they had a secondary submittal where someone, I I don't know who, corrected their methodology so that they needed to double count any floor to ceiling at ground level that was over twenty feet. And then for upper level fours, they needed to double count anything over fifteen feet. So the, while we're hearing these totals, the four thousand, I mean, four hundred and eighty-five thousand a square feet for retail, the actual floor level for retail is four hundred thousand square feet. So it we're, what you're hearing is the addition of a an imaginary plane fifteen feet above the floor or twenty feet above the floor, if it's on the ground level, being added too. So it's it's kind of an odd calculation that was made, and you have you have to be very careful for steps in the ceiling to make sure that the the math is done correctly. And I, when I was going through several sheets, I've I found some errors which the city would then need to, you know, essentially hold the developer to, to make sure that, because they're using this double counting method, that it that the the totals end up correct in the end. So when we we were seeing this this sheet of showing the contamination across the site, now that is from July thirtieth, and it was and it was posted about a month after they received the report. There was also another additional report around the the pesticides. However, there was a whole separate issue. So going back to twenty sixteen, when the developer received their Geosphere report, which they had apparently contracted for, that had only eight soil borings. And it was measured, it was selected to see how it compared to the Treasure Island import requirements to export the soil, because on this site, there's a huge amount of export, like almost two million cubic yards. We're we're talking thousands of truck trips of of soil needs to be hauled out of here. So they were looking at Treasure Island. None of the, none of the soil borings met the Treasure Island import criteria. And in that report, there was a reading of zero point five two three milligrams per kilogram of of PCBs and, which is over the zero point two three screening level. And later on, after they received their twenty eighteen approval, they started doing soil borings in October of twenty eighteen, and then again in January, and subsequently more after that. But it was discovered that the PCB levels, there was a reading of one point nine, which is far over the zero point two three. And that that, so there, the map that we're seeing doesn't show the PCBs. There's also potentially some issue with chromium. That there was mentioned that a secondary report was going to be executed in in twenty sixteen by Geosphere. We haven't yet seen that. I would like to see it. Councilmember Willie mentions this, the the JCPenney site. What's interesting there is that next door to that site, nineteen three 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 Valco Parkway, has a deed restricted, a deed restriction on it not to have residential, daycare, hospital, and some some other things. And that's available on GeoTracker, if you want to look up that address. So I have some concern if there was anything migrating from that property. Also, the JCPenney Auto Center was essentially closed, but it hadn't been removed and cleaned. So you have a potential for hydraulic lifts and and other things that they had there, similar to what went on with the Sears property. There's also the ice rink and mechanical rooms and other potentials, especially considering you have about twenty feet of fill on the north side of the of the JCPenney, which would need to be looked at. So I I've always been concerned that we didn't have enough testing on that side, and all we had were some twenty sixteen Geosphere reports, just a couple of borings over there. And like I said, those exceeded the Treasure Island import criteria. So I I think that's all I want to add at this point. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. We now have Councilmember Way, and we'll, if there are no further hands after that, go back to our public for commentary. Councilmember
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I I have a couple, this is question here. So I have a couple of questions for, maybe interest city manager Greg can answer. Um, the first is really appreciate your, you know, presentation. And on the organization chart, it is mentioned that the city Valco website information needs to be updated, and that's really appreciated. But my question is, when we update the information, I believe the history of Valco needs to be preserved if the information is correct. So I'm just curious, what is the update procedure? If somebody wants to find the history, do they have to go back to certain? Or is it still going to be easy to find? Or they have to dig something out? That's my question on the city Valco website information update. And I believe update is necessary. The second to add to Councilmember Moore and Councilmember John Willie's comments on contamination, my question is, according to the staff and the city managers' experience, can the public and the city council trust the county environment health procedures? If if we can trust their procedures now, this site is in their hands, and they are, you know, doing investigation, further investigation. So my question is, is that enough for us to place our trust into the county's environmental health issues to protect the public health? And my third question is really about, a- actually, because of the new information that you just revealed on the legislature just being passed this morning, maybe this question is invalid, but I think the public should know. And maybe one assessment from our city attorney about the legal risk facing our city. Our, if, I I know, you know, interest city manager Greg said it's too early to consider whether the city manager or staff would, is gonna, you know, grant that one year extension because the applicant hasn't even applied yet. But if they do apply, and then what is the, I guess this is for the city attorney's question? What, and what, I think the public has the right to know, and the council will want to know too. What's the general risk of litigation and liability to the city if an extension entitlement is denied by the staff?
Well, s- so I, you know, we would start from the premise that that the city manager would follow the requirements in in the 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 statute in making a decision on the extension request. If if those requirements are followed, that that, of course, you know, the city be be protected from liability. If if there there was a denial of the extension request that was made on criteria that are inconsistent with the statute, you know, then then, of course, we would have the risk of that decision being reversed. being reversed. There's also the potential risk of damages and attorney's fees.
Thank you. So my other questions are for Greg, I think, interest city manager.
Thank you. In terms of Valco update process, it's just an issue I brought up to one of our staff today about how we might proceed. So we have it mapped out. I'll tell you, I'm uncomfortable getting rid of any documents that we've presented on site, online, because people may view it, we're trying to hide something. So I'm thinking there may be more of an archiving, where we set up an archive section of the site. But I will defer to those more experts in doing that sort of work than myself. But I do certainly share your concern that we both want the current information to be easily accessible to the public and in no way lose the history of the project and what others may have come to rely on for historical documentation. And I think those are two values I would certainly be looking to bring forward in the update process.
And the other question is, how trustworthy, and you know, as Mayor Paul says, public safety is the council's first priority, or the most we should care about. So how trustworthy can we trust the county environmental health's procedure with the applicant?
You know, in my discussion with them today, they seem to be knowledgeable, informed, and prepared for this project. But it is a very small office in the county that has to cover all of Santa Clara County. And so the size concerned me, but I think this will likely be one of the larger projects that they're currently handling at this time. Certainly in terms of their knowledge and expertise, it seems strong. I would also point out that I'm not sure we have much recourse in that it is not a direct responsibility of the city. And instead, it is now a mandated agreement by County Health that has sole jurisdiction and responsibility. Any further toxic or investigatory work the city might choose to do, I think would require permissions and authorities that we don't have. But we would explore that at that time. So I, I believe we can trust in County Department of Environmental Health, and I'm also not sure we have next choice, but to trust in the Department of Environmental Health.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Moore, briefly, before we go to the members of the public.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that the developer has not requested that the East Side property have, have a case open and has not applied for regulatory oversight on that. Is there any explanation for why they wouldn't be doing that, especially since we're explaining these concerns that we have, why they wouldn't be doing these soil borings and letting us know? You know, it begs of, you know, what's the secret? Why, why isn't this being transparent?
I think it is being transparent. That's why I shared that news tonight, that the East Side is not currently under their regulatory control. And the city and the project applicant, or not applicant, because they're not an applicant, the property owner, would have to go through the same process that was done for the West Side to come under the county's regulatory review. And I believe that is work staff will be starting to do following this update regarding what are the next steps and what information do we have regarding the East Side that more may warrant consideration of a equivalent process by the property owner and DEH.
Okay, just to clarify, my question is, why, why haven't they asked for this if they could be providing us some soil tests that, to make us feel more secure about what's going on and that there's not the potential for a lengthy cleanup of something that unexpected? So I, I guess I would, I would be wanting to see some soil borings done there. Oh, boy.
I'm sorry, I wasn't more clear in my response. I believe the county was clear that they don't initiate their engagements. It's up to the property owner or the jurisdiction to initiate consideration of their engagement. So they would not just tell the property owner or the city to start an investigation of a project that they're not currently in a project cleanup paradigm with.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll now go over to our members of the public. I'll remind people that we'll be calling on you, you'll have three minutes to speak. And as long as your hand is raised by the conclusion of the first speaker's remarks, I will call on you. I'll call out the names that have hands raised right now, and I'll call the names out for the first speaker. The first speaker is Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Josh Seelow, Anne Paulson, Paul Soto, Munni Matapatla, Jennifer Griffin, Lisa Warren, Nessa Tekmansky, Erin Eckhaus, and Saleem Demerjji. And Shawnee, welcome, you're the first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. This is Shawnee Kleinhouse from Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. We've been following the project for a very long time. We haven't taken a position, but we have discussed the project with the applicants. And they, at the time, promised that they will use bird safe design on all the glazing in the project. I don't know if that still binds them, if they still intend on doing so. And now that the city has the bird safety and dark sky ordinance, I was just wondering if that applies to this project. I think it should, and if they're applying for extension, then some of the more innovative and recent city regulations that are objective and accepted as objective by the city should apply to this project. So that's all, it's a comment or a question, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kleinhouse. We'll go on to our next speaker, but before that, I'll go ahead and read out the additional names. We have Kelsey Baines, Ansh Shukla, Jean Bedord, R. Wang, Craig Guest, Neil Park McLintock, caller 5821, Stephen Scharf, and our last speaker is John Geis. I apologize for any mispronunciations of names. Josh Seelow, welcome, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, city council members, interim city manager and staff. My name is Josh Seelow, and I'm the executive director of West Valley Community Services. And if you don't know, we're a Cupertino-based nonprofit organization that has served individuals and families facing food and housing insecurity in this community and in the greater West Valley for the past 48 years. From the very beginning, West Valley Community Services has spoken in support of the affordable housing proposed as part of the Valco SB 35 plan. We've spoken at several city council meetings to that end. And we've been disappointed by the delay in bringing these affordable units online. And in the meantime, as you all know, the housing crisis in our community and in our county is getting worse and worse. And I just want to give you some data points. These are from San Jose State's 2021 Silicon Valley Pain Index. There are only 29 homes currently available for every 100 extremely low-income households. 74% of extremely low-income households spend more than half of their income on housing. And 40,000 homes around there need to be built in order to provide housing to accommodate low-income residents. Now, these are countywide numbers, not just Cupertino numbers. But we're certainly seeing these numbers play out on the ground here in Cupertino, where West Valley Community Services has seen staggering increases in demand for food and rental assistance, not just last year, but over the last five years. With rents returning to pre-pandemic levels, folks deeply in debt from lost wages or illness due to COVID-19, and at least one-third of our county's residents not earning enough money to be self-sufficient, we need our leaders to act swiftly and decisively in support of affordable housing. I hope we can agree, affordable housing is at the heart of inequality in our region, especially when folks are spending so much of their pay each month just to keep a roof over their heads. And it's a problem many years and many decades and centuries, actually, in the making. It is important that our leaders provide oversight and counsel as the project proceeds. We need to make sure the residents of Cupertino are safe. But it is also my sincere hope that our leaders will stand up for and not stand in the way of ensuring the plan for affordable housing at Valco can move forward. Thank you.
Josh, can I use your 30 seconds to ask you a question?
Sure.
So I, I appreciate your work, you know. We all support West Valley Community Services. My question is basically this. So how do we justify a project that is creating a need for more housing and invoking, you know, alleviation of the housing crisis? I mean, I just, you know, basic question. What's your gut reaction on that?
I think that this is one of many tools that we need to look at closely to address the housing inequity in our community. When we look at families who are struggling to keep a roof over their head, or even the families we know living in Cupertino who are living in their cars now, I find it hard to say, no, we, we're not doing everything we can do to ensure affordable housing.
I, you know, I thank you very much for that. You know, and I agree, you know, I know that this will alleviate a lot of present-day issues. I just, I just worry about the kicking of the can down the road issues that we're inevitably going to face. But, but thank you very much for all that.
Mayor, can I ask about environmental impact? Does he think that we should ignore contaminants and build affordable housing?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I'm going to try to keep this within the three minutes allocated to each speaker. And so if you have follow-on questions and the speaker's willing to, to answer and engage, you know, please let me know and subsequent. Our next speaker is Anne Paulson. Welcome, Anne.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Anne Paulson from Los Altos. As I work for affordable housing in my own city, I also want to see my neighbors in Cupertino do their part. We need affordable housing in the South Bay. The Valco project will provide a huge 1,200 affordable homes and also a very cool green roof for all of us. The city must push aggressively to get this affordable housing built, including working with the county to move it forward instead of using routine soil remediation, the kind of remediation done all the time as an excuse not to issue permits. As to the extension, the state says, they told you, this three-year time clock for the building to get started was stopped while the developer had to defend against a meritless lawsuit. And so the developers don't need any extension. Now, the very people who initiated these losing, delaying lawsuits are on the city council trying to delay again. The city should accept the state's obvious legal interpretation instead of setting itself up for yet another losing lawsuit that wastes taxpayer money and everybody's time. We need the housing, not the money-wasting meritless lawsuits. Stop the stalling, stop inventing more reasons not to issue permits, and get to work with the developer to get this project going. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Anne. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised? Did you want to?
Sorry.
Our next speaker is Paul Soto. Welcome, Paul.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. I just, I cannot emphasize enough, and I don't mean this in any kind of patronizing way, but the balance that you have here about the different ways in which you're approaching the same issue, but you're approaching it from different areas, I, the people of Cupertino, I think, can trust in the process that is, that is taking place right here, right now. I go to 30-plus meetings, like I said, in San Jose, we are getting dogged out, disrespected, just shunned. I mean, billionaires have taken over, okay? What you have to understand is that the redlining maps of 1939 created this backlash. So you, you hit it on the money of Mayor Paul by saying, you don't want to just be kicking it down the road, because it did get kicked to you. And now you're dealing with it. So I would, I would suggest centering that redlining map, and here's why. In 2016, Dave Cortese did a homeless, he quantified how much homelessness costs the county, okay? And it was $500 million per year for a population of only, at that time, was like 8,000, 8,000 people, 500 million, okay? And the response from that was a measure, I don't remember the name, but a measure of something. The reason why I'm here today is because I was pissed, because that money, the voter did not think that when that money was allocated and it was able to be accessed, that the first housing unit that was going to go up goes up in Cupertino? That 19-unit senior housing project that went up? I want to get away from the, from the, from the fact that it was a senior housing. I don't want to get into that moral issue, because it's not a moral issue. The fact is, is that when the voter went into the voting booth and he voted that this was going to help alleviate housing, they were anticipating that it was going to be centered where the housing and the homelessness was experienced most, which was District 3. No, it went to your city. And so I'm not calling anybody out here. What I'm saying is that as a citizen, that's why I'm here today, is to really advocate that we cannot do that any longer, and we really have to start centering equity with and using the objectivity that the redlining maps will provide us, because we are dealing with the generational impact of those redlining maps. And so, like I said, I'm here to avail myself to, to that process, because I've studied this for years. And so now I'm just going around and giving it away to the community. That's, that's the role that I play. So I think that you have an excellent balance in terms of balancing the safety with your timelines, with your costs, and especially with the lawyer, with the, with the attorney that the vice mayor is suggesting, that those costs be factored in and determined that the city should not pick up that cost for their failure to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is Munni Matapatla. Welcome, Munni.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Manager. My name is Munni Matapatla. I'm a Cupertino resident. I serve on the planning commission, but here, speaking as a Cupertino resident. I'd like to take this moment to thank you all, staff, and vigilant Cupertino community members for doing the right thing with respect to the Valco project. The community all along pointed out that Valco site is a contaminated site, needed to be handled carefully, and is not eligible for SB 35 approval. Even though there was a lot of, you know, legal wrangling around this, I'm glad that our city did the right thing by hiring experts and establishing the fact that it's a contaminated site needing special handling. I'll read the last paragraph from your staff report on page two. Due to additional review and requirements by the city, contaminated soils and soil vapor have been identified on the project site. The project developer has entered into voluntary cleanup agreement with the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health. SCCDEH now has the regulatory jurisdiction over continuing site investigation and remediation, and is prohibiting soil disturbance until it is valid, it can validate that it is safe to do so. The Valco project anticipates that SCCDEH oversight will continue until spring 2022, although recent testing has revealed even greater contamination issues than previously identified, including some measures beyond permissible residential thresholds. This is a pretty big deal. I'm so pleased that our city is engaging all the right agencies, such as environmental health, fire, traffic, and water agencies to assess the impact before issuing permits. Thanks for digging into these staffing details for the fire outpost that will be established at this site. As a resident, I couldn't ask for more. I would highly encourage you to collect the impact assessment fees of $125 million assessed by the staff instead of waiving it. As a taxpayer, I don't want that cost transferring to ordinary residents like me, as someone has to pay for these expenses. When the city doesn't waive any fees for ordinary residents, why should you waive such large fees for a wealthy developer? Please apply the rules uniformly. Great to hear people like, you know, Mr. Paul Soto from neighboring cities complimenting you for a community friendliness that you are exhibiting here. Thank you, and keep up the good work. You guys are awesome. I'm proud of you. My humble request, just learn to ignore the smear bloggers and fake news reporters. Thank you.
Thank you, Munni. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Paul, and to this, Mr. City Manager, that was a very well-delivered update. I've sat through a lot of things in the last 20 years in this city, and that was very bravely done. I just had a couple of comments. I, in terms of the contamination of the Valco site, as many of you are aware, I went to Homestead High School, as did my siblings. And my brother, who went on to have a long career in high tech, one of his first jobs out of high school was working at a circuit board company in Mountain View. And that company was dumping acid into the basement, essentially, it's actually a superfund site now, I don't think it can even have housing on. housing on it, and it is contaminated with PCBs and carbon tetra chloride. If you guys are familiar with carbon tet, it is one of the most, it can, it has killed many people. And having had a chemistry background, if we dealt with anything with that, you were in the hood with goggles on and you did not get anywhere near it. I'm just saying right now, I, I think we need to make sure that we, and I'll, I'll just deviate here, that in terms of having lived the drama of SB 9 and SB 10 and SB 478 in the last, occupied the last month of my life, I am very, very concerned that we have a lot of people writing these bills and they are trying to not do sequoia. Well, I'm sorry, if, you know, this, they're trying to apply this to the rest of the state. Well, we're in the middle of Silicon Valley, we had orchard land, but stuff all over the place is contaminated for various reasons because of history in the high tech, history of automotive, who knows? But we can't ignore it, and this is the part that concerns me, the bills that are being rolled out of Sacramento in this quote, "socialistic dictator," whatever you want to call it, they're, they're completely ignoring the environment. And this is our Silicon Valley, our high tech area. A lot of people worked in high tech 50 years before the current tech companies here, and I think a lot of people forget that. I think that we need to make sure that we do due diligence, and I think that the city is doing the right thing for the public. I'm not real excited about this green roof on Valco.
In second.
I, I'm worried about it falling down, it could fall into the roads, Valco Parkway, Stevens Creek Boulevard, and 22 story buildings? What if there's an earthquake? That thing in Miami pancake?
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, our next speaker is Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
There is a hole in the report for this agenda item. There is no explanation as to why, quote, "staff has been working with the developer on an implementation plan to be contained in an extension letter." Why is staff doing the work for the developer? Today's additional staff report states that an extension application is anticipated, expected, believed to potentially contain ample documentation to get approval. Staff is helping the developer write it? Since the 2018 project application, there has been evidence that the documents contain false claims, fuzzy math, and withheld significant information, including hazardous material status. Staff's report outlines issues and evidence, yet it's some, an unexplainable reason for considering an extension. That, the report's last paragraphs deserve serious thinking. Our 2021 city attorney has advised that a one-time, one-year extension is not inappropriate to grant upon receipt of a timely application. We are two weeks away from the expiration date, and now, or September 14th, seems the opposite of timely. Footnote 2 on page 19 refers to the developer avoiding obligations to follow rules. Beware, the decision to approve or not approve an extension is discretionary, please exhibit wise discretion. This developer has proven in our city and this state that they have a habit of promising what they will not deliver. Quote, "seeking written commitments," unquote, "from a group that avoids development agreements is futile and bound to be unenforceable." Staff describes gaps in critical information and refers to an unwillingness on the part of the developer to fulfill their obligation to apply for an extension. Today's supplemental report makes different assumptions. Again, I do not understand why staff is, quote, "working with the developer on an implementation plan to be contained in an extension letter." How can anyone buy the argument that significant progress has been made when the developer is pretending to play catch up on environmental investigations and there is evidence the developer failed the transparency test from day one? The soil contamination reality should be precluded, should have precluded SB 35 approval three years ago. Conveniently, it was withheld, but the cat's out of the bag now and it has become a tiger. No entity should be rewarded for bad behavior. If developer-sponsored HCD's threats of litigation guide the city's decision on this, you make yourselves weak and will only be repeatedly taken advantage of if you allow things to move forward. Let fear of making a horrible decision for your community override the fear of a lawsuit that the city would have every chance of winning. The decision is discretionary, it is critical that you make good use of your discretion. Don't allow residents of Cupertino and the region, or our collective environment and health, to be victims in numerous ways because you're afraid.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dinesh Tekmansky. Welcome, Dinesh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul, good evening, council. I wanted to, I'm a Dinesh Tekmansky, I'm a 30 year resident of Cupertino and a fourth generation Californian. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. Had the Valco contaminants been known, the SB 35 project would have never been approved for housing by stipulations in the law itself. And it's kind of funny how we had to find the contaminants on our own accord. Anyhow, it's also quite a coincidence that Senator Weiner is proposing amendments to SB 35 on the eve of Valco's approval expiration. It's a strange democracy. Anyhow, should the SB 35 expiration amendments to extend the time period to May 2023 not pass, we have some pretty serious things to consider. Cupertino now has arena of almost 4, 4,600 new housing units in the next eight year cycle, and if our city doesn't reach its goals, we could be financially penalized, the state can step in, and by non-compliance, we could be subjected to developers being able to streamline even more SB 35 projects with only a 15% BMR requirement, which would send our ability to gain low income housing into an endless downward spiral. That in itself is a really important consideration. So, you know, a lot of things have changed since the original SB 35 plan was adopted. Arena's almost tripled, the pandemic has made office a much riskier investment, and now we're saddled with an onslaught of state housing bills that undermine the power and expertise of our elected council. Sand Hill still wants to build over 1 million square feet of office while our city's absolute need, need is housing. So, as I see it, every square foot of office is a square foot of housing lost, and the current SB 35 plan not only negates the addition of the 2,400 new units, but it also leaves a short housing for up to 3,600 new workers, which include the low income workers. Hello? So, any office that is allowed should only be there to support the building of additional BMR units. What also really begs questioning is why other developers, I've noticed, have purchased land more recently than Sand Hill, and they're perfectly capable of turning-
18 seconds.
-on 100% housing projects. So it's the responsibility of our planning, building and legal departments, plus our city manager and council to do the right thing by all of our residents, by returning Valco, the Valco project back to the regular approval process, and by striving to reach the most optimal balance of jobs.
All right, our next speaker is Aaron Eckhaus, welcome, Aaron.
Hello, thank you. My name is Aaron Eckhaus. I'm the Regional Policy Manager with California YIMBY, yes, in my backyard. Proud to support state laws like SB 35 to ensure that housing and affordable housing are built in all cities across the state. Cupertino is a poster child for the failure of local control to meet California's housing needs. Last year, 95% of the homes built in Cupertino were approved through state preemption of local land use authority, they were ADUs. Those are homes that would not exist under local control, they are the direct consequence of state law. Cupertino remains one of the most intensely segregated cities in the Bay Area and has manifestly failed to build adequate affordable housing to meet its needs over the past decade. You have in front of you a proposal that will create 1,200 new subsidized, income-restricted affordable homes for people who otherwise would have no chance of living in Cupertino, of being able to afford to live in Cupertino. You have been stonewalling that process by denying the necessary permits for excavation of contaminated soil and for construction to proceed. You have been informed by the state of California that you are interpreting the law incorrectly. And the thing is, it is absolutely in your interest as a city for Valco to move forward. Valco in and of itself would meet 2/3 of your low income arena for the sixth cycle. It would start you off 2/3 of the way to done in your goal of creating the low and very low income housing that you need over the next eight years. So I encourage you to make sure that this moves forward in a timely way, to stop stonewalling. You know, show us what Cupertino can do by way of housing solutions, or you can continue to be the poster child for the failure of local control. Thanks.
Can I take 30 of your seconds and ask you a couple of questions? Do you mind?
Go ahead.
All right, why Cupertino? You know, we're not in a unique position in the state. Why are we picked on so much? One, question one. Question two, you say we're one of the most intensely segregated cities in the state, that, that's, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry respectfully, but that's insane. I mean, how, how do you classify us as segregated?
I would refer you to the Othering and Belonging Institute and the research that they have done on segregation in the Bay Area.
Well, I, I think you need to look at our demographic numbers very, very respectfully. I mean, I, and, and this first question, you know, I, I think you, I, I would welcome a dialogue later on with respect to this, and, and thank you for being here tonight. All right, we'll go on to Saleem DeMergi, welcome.
Hi, yeah, I, I'm Saleem, I'm a renter, and in a way, I actually appreciate the fact that the mayor called Mr. Eckhaus's comments insane. You know, earlier you had said that you were hoping that there would be no mudslinging, no attack, no, I'm, I'm really bad with that word, vituperative. Well, yeah, so anyways, I appreciate you, you showing that that's not actually what, how you feel. So I'm calling to support the Valco project because expedite, expediting this project is the least the city can do for affordable housing. I feel really bad for city staff, they've been given a monumental task, which is to do levels of mental gymnastics that Simone Biles would be envious of. And all of this is because the majority of council has always opposed this project. These environmental issues and extension issues are just the latest in low effort, low IQ and blatantly illegal ways to block affordable housing at Valco. And this is exactly why SB 35 was passed. Cupertino is one of the best arguments for SB 35's existence. Cities like yours, who constantly obstruct affordable housing, do not deserve local control. This is why your city has lost the right to say no to housing in your backyard. And in response to losing local control, the city is deluding itself into believing it can still obstruct housing, the law be down. And you lost in court before, you will lose in court again, your residents will be stuck holding the bill. So I think you should be honest. If you want to be pro-resident, you should be frank with your constituents and tell them the truth. You do not have local control anymore when it comes to Valco. These manufactured reasons for opposing this project have been, been shown to be false by HCD's reading of SB 35, and additionally, these manufactured, the manufactured concern over the environmental issues are your doing. You have blocked permits to clean the soil. So if you block this project, I promise you, HCD will hear about this, and you will have a very difficult time showing to HCD that you have a realistic blueprint for accommodating arena. These are 2,400 homes being offered on a, on a silver plate for you, and you've been saying no for years on end. So I hope that your housing element does not get certified, I hope that you continue to lose local control in even more dramatic ways, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Right, thanks very much, Saleem. Our next speaker is Kelsey Baines, welcome, Kelsey.
Thank you, good evening, council, my name is Kelsey Baines, I am the Regional Director for YIMBY Action. We advocate for welcoming communities where everyone can thrive, and I'm just reflecting on how time really flies, it's hard to believe that it's been several years since I came to Cupertino to speak in favor of replacing a dead mall with thousands of homes in a mixed use neighborhood. And since then, we have watched the housing crisis grow ever more dire. We've seen rents go down a little bit, particularly for high, higher income people, but we're also seeing more people than ever sleeping on our streets and in vehicles, living in unstable or overcrowded conditions, and traveling very long distances to serve our communities. So it's very disappointing to see the delay of project construction because we know that housing delayed is housing denied. So I encourage you to get this project moving so that structure, construction can begin. And I know many of you are, are active opponents of, of this project, but the reality is that the Friends of Better Cupertino lawsuit, they lost their appeal in trying to kill this project in May of 2020, and what that means is that there, there doesn't need to be a new request because it's only been a little over a year since that litigation was completed. So what I would like to see the city do is accept that outcome, which may be disappointing to you, but it's still facilitate the, the construction of affordable housing rather than afford it. So we need to see you accept that the law is just not on your side, and think about both the best interest of future residents who would be served by this housing, as well as the best interest of current residents who won't be served by additional litigation. And if you're frustrated with state legislation to override local control, it's really incumbent upon you as local leaders to facilitate the construction of entitled projects, because no is not an option anymore. So we need to quit the shenanigans and stop the creative roadblocks, which will really only serve to inspire new state legislation. I can certainly share that I've talked to state legislators about my experiences in Cupertino, and I shared that three years ago, I waited until 1:00 AM to speak, and I was heckled by the now vice mayor, and the former mayor shamelessly lied from the dais to undermine housing production. So if you want your local control, you need to demonstrate local responsibility, and you need to let the applicant do the environmental mitigation, you need to let them remove the contaminated soil and let them begin construction so we can get people housed near jobs in Cupertino. It is past time to do this, thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey, and we'll go on to Ansh Shukla, welcome, Ansh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Paul, it's good to put a face to some of our local leaders. I'm, I grew up in Cupertino, multi-decade resident, now working in, in Cupertino. It's a, it's a funny little place, I think I went to high school with one and a half African American students, to answer your question about why you think segregation is a problem, and I think maybe a handful of Latino residents. It's also interesting to see, when I was growing up in Cupertino, the cost of housing was a problem that was on the minds of my family, basically my entire childhood, and it's kind of the, the excitement that I'm hearing in this meeting of finding a loophole that will allow the city to take the project off the expedited rails into the slower ones. This is probably the same sentiment that caused a lot of pain for my family as I was growing up. I also, I hear a lot of concern about the environment being raised in this meeting, which is funny because my classmates were tested for mercury poisoning in elementary school, my parents live downwind of a cement factory, which is doing, God knows what, environmental impact. which is doing god knows what environmental impact. My classmates from high school, who can still afford to live in the region, live in apartments built on former Superfund sites in Lopetus, which I'm sure have all kinds of chemicals leaching out of them. I'm not sure if it's worse than a former Sears Tire Center. That Tire Center is itself interesting to me because some of my high school classmates who couldn't make it to college worked there briefly before being priced out of the region. So it's good putting a face to some of the people involved. Also, another interesting personal experience I have with some of the processes and people involved in this project. I currently work in Cupertino. I would be interested in living in the project and maybe one of the single males that would prey on local high school students as suggested by Councilmember Moore in a post on the internet a few years ago. not sure why I was muted.
No, you'll be fine.
But these are my interactions with the processes and people involved and I'm really glad state law is taking some control away.
Thank you, Ansh. Our next speaker is Jean Bedord.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm here tonight to commend the city manager and staff for this report. For too long, we as members of the public have only heard bits and pieces of supposed progress on the SB 35 project. We can all see the big gaping hole as we go out to eat at bustling Cupertino Main Street and wonder how long it will take for this city to get its act together and make Valco a reality. Thank you for identifying the challenges that remain. This is a big step forward in getting them resolved. I urge you to move as quickly as possible on the Valco Project All Hands Meeting to the city so the city and the property owner can work together instead of accusing each other of non-cooperation. Even more importantly, the city work plan needs significant vision. Too much staff time is being wasted on low priority projects. At this point, the city has two and only two major priorities. The first is the Rena housing element due by the end of 2022. The city has to plan for a minimal, just minimum, of 4,588 housing units. This means after the fact revision of the general plan and zoning will be necessary to accommodate these units as well as comply with the new housing laws in 2022. The second priority, which is a major component of complying with the Rena allocation, is major progress on Valco. The majority city council rejected the Valco specific plan, which involved project negotiation. Instead, this majority council opted for the no-negotiation SB 35 plan under state law, not local control. It's time for the city to take ownership of that decision and move ahead. The SB 35 plan is not perfect, but majority council made the choice. So let's move ahead and get construction underway. I'm also very concerned about the potential for extensive litigation. The Friends of Better Cupertino lawsuit consumed two years. I have a copy of the September 1st technical assistance letter from HCD, which the city attorney disputes. This council is already under threat of a lawsuit for passing an illegal bonus density ordinance. Is this inviting yet more litigation? I urge you to stop fighting state law and start building our community.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is R. Wang.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council, interim city manager, staff, and fellow good residents of Cupertino. Don't be bullied by those who have no care for the environment and public safety. Today I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I normally serve on the Planning Commission as chair. I'm glad we realize that short-term solutions to generate 2,400 units of housing that create a deficit of 3,400 housing units due to a large amount of office space is not a long-term or short-term solution. Over the past 35 months, the city of Cupertino staff has gone above and beyond to accommodate the applicant. In many cases, their actions exceed what the norms are for planning in the city. This recommendation has potentially come to the detriment of the Cupertino residents, our dear union workers in harm's way, and the greater San Francisco Bay Area public. We have an obligation in the city for the city council to have, protect the health, the safety, and the welfare of our citizens. Now, to be clear, the city staff has known about contaminants that would invalidate this SB 35 project as far back as May of 2018. Even more concerning, Sand Hill Properties has also known about listings that would invalidate this project as far back as 2003 in the Serious Report, when they were looking at buying this property. This site has been listed in the Geotracker site by the California State Water Board. Sand Hill Properties knew this site exceeded residential screening levels in October 2016 from the Geosphere Report. This is not a failure of local control. This is a reason why we need more local control. This is a success story on oversight on public safety and health. Why have our planning department, our community development leadership, and our former city managers not demanded that these results, as soon as they were made available, to be made public and put on the Valco SB 35 project website? These results should have been shared with the Planning Commission and City Council as soon as they found out. I'm glad we have a new interim city manager that is focused on creating this transparency. And there are a bunch of other questions we should be asking. What's on the east side of the project? And why have no tests been conducted over there? Especially the project approval notices for potential deed restriction, as mentioned earlier. Why hasn't the staff asked Geotracker to ask for a complete grid of bores across the site? Let's stop playing whack-a-mole guess where the next bore is. Is this clean? Is it not clean? I mean, the most recent 16 or 19 soil boring show contaminants above residential screening levels. This is completely a different story than what the applicant and the city staff have told us. Without the completion of the east side, how can we validate this project as not a qualifying SB 35 project? Look, we need to also put some covenants. The applicant must complete the residential component prior to concurrent or concurrent with. This is the point. We have to actually make sure that residential sites are built before any other occupancy permits are there in order to support affordable housing. There should be covenants and restrictions on usage on the west side and the east side and all the residential construction is completed, especially affordable housing. Transfer of ownership should not be allowed until the whole project is completed, including the bridge from the east to the west. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Craig.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay. My name is Craig Bachelor. I am the architect who submits the plans to the city for approval. I've met both Kitty Moore and Liang Chow. I've met you as well, Darcy Paul. Welcome. I've been listening to this conversation and frankly, quite abhorred by the accusations that are being leveled, particularly by the previous person, R. Wang. I only wanted to mention that while this conversation about contaminants on the site, which occupies less than 0.0001% of the entire site, is PCBs, which are found all throughout the Bay Area, were discovered after demolition. Obviously, on the east side, we have not demolished that mall. We have not demolished that area. So of course, there is no record and there is nothing to be found for that area. But I don't want to contest those issues. What I would like to contest is the fact that the city has not, did not identify a third-party plan check reviewer until May of 2020. So after we put in permits in 2018 for a variety of different, I appreciate you nodding your head, Kitty, but the city did not approve a plan check reviewer until 2020. And so it should be known that while we're putting in permits, we're putting, we're working with staff, it's difficult when you are trying to build something. If you were to take the Apple Campus 2 as an example, I highly doubt that it was possible for people to email the city permit reviewers and get permit responses in a timely manner to build a complex property like that. And currently, there is no dialogue. There's no ability to collaborate with the city because of the contamination of the Better Cupertino people who are sitting on city council, who won't allow for us to actually have a productive and a productive dialogue with the people who approve permits. If you want to see resolution with Valco, if you want to see something resolved, if you have no interest, then you have no interest. If you want to see something resolved, there needs to be a collaborative approach. And currently, that does not exist with the city. And that is coming from the person who is currently permitting and submitting documents to the city for a permit.
Thank you, Craig. Our next speaker is Neil Park McLentik. Welcome, Neil.
Mayor, can I address the incorrect accusation?
I'm sorry.
Well, throughout, ever since I become a city
Welcome, Neil.
Are you sure?
Sorry, I never had any interaction with
Should I wait?
City staff member who are involved with Valco.
Liang, no. You can respond after, but the speaker had completed his time. Welcome, Neil.
I'm gonna start now then, okay. My name's Neil Park McLentik. I'm the Chair of Cupertino for All. I've also lived here most of my life. I moved here when I was seven years old and now I'm 24. But I remember back then, just the amount of sentiment the mall really gave to me and what it meant to me in my development as well. I probably had like my first hangout with a friend at the Meat Fresh at the mall. And then, you know, fast forward a long time, the mall's kind of dead. Walked through it like a ghost town and that was the cool thing to do when we were in high school. You know, I really do seriously care about what happens on the site and I want to make that super clear. I want to see something done with the site in the immediate future. I don't know how much longer I have in Cupertino because it's very expensive to be here as someone in their emerging career. But, you know, I would hope that one day in the near future, if I were to come back, I can see this completed project and just really have it signify how far we've come as a city. It sounds like there's some dialogue that needs to be had between the city and the developer, and there's a lack of communication there. My understanding of what's going on is that this extension is not actually necessary and that the project is not going to expire this month because of the litigation. And I know there's been a lot of talk about, well, that doesn't seem democratic. Why do we do things like that? It's actually very common in the legislative process to pass a bill and then the following cycle to amend it. This upcoming amendment that's on the governor's desk, 1174, it's not a Scott Wiener bill. Not everything's by Scott Wiener. There are actually a lot of legislators who care about this issue. And it comes from this common sense's belief that we need to make sure we're putting adequate benchmarks for our cities and that the rules that they have in place facilitate development as well. Another thing I just wanted to kind of comment on really quickly is on the segregation piece. I understand where you're coming from, Mayor. Our community is very unique. I identify on the census as Asian-American, so definitely that's something that's unique about our community. But I would second Aaron's point that we are ranked number 10 most segregated in the state. But it's not based on that piece. It's based on the fact that we are very monolithically upper higher income. And I don't know if anyone can honestly tell me that if you're Latino in the South Bay, or if you are Southeast Asian Filipino, you're likely able to move here. So we've still got a lot of work to do and I hope that communication happens because I want to, we all want to see this project happen. We want to see those affordable units, so yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Neil. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is caller 5821. And you're calling in, so I believe you'll need to hit star six. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, for the opportunity to speak. I am a longtime Cupertino resident. Thank you to the city manager and staff that contributed to the report and thank you for promoting transparency. SB 35 might be a good law, but the current staff report indicates that the developer is either incompetent or unwilling to build a project that honors the positive aspects of SB 35. It's not in the developer's financial interest to complete an SB 35 project. I view the current staff report in the historical context of Valco projects. 2018, the SB 35 project was used as an ugly alternative to try to make another oversized project look good by comparison. That other project was the Valco specific plan, which would have been more profitable for the developer than the SB 35 project because the VSP project had less affordable housing. Residents raised many issues that the VSP project shared with the SB 35 project and that the current staff report verifies in the context of the SB 35 project. Nevertheless, a three-person majority of the 2018 city council ignored residents' concerns and approved the VSP project. The VSP project was soon overturned by popular referendum and residents who raised the alarm about the VSP and SB 35 project were elected to council. The developer might still try to use the SB 35 project to make future ugly projects look more desirable in comparison. The slow progress of the current project is perhaps a delay tactic to maintain a threat of an ugly SB 35 project. But as it becomes clear that the developer lacks intention and/or competence to deliver the SB 35 project, that threat diminishes. On one hand, I'd like to see the SB 35 project terminated so that we can move on to a better project and so that the developer can no longer use the SB 35 project to make another ugly project look better by comparison. On the other hand, I understand staff's prudence to extend the deadline. I think it's very likely that many significant issues will remain unresolved after another year and perhaps even more issues will come to light. The extra time will add more evidence of the intentions and competence of the Valco developing. However, if the remedy is to allow the developer to modify the project whenever he doesn't want to conform to his original specs, what will we end up with? Will we have any traffic remediation measures? Will we have any parkland? Will we have any BMR housing? At what point does the city decide that the developer is not executing to his plan and call BS? The city grants an extension. It is my hope that the city holds the developer to strict standards. Again, thank you for the report.
Thank you very much, caller. Our next speaker is Stephen Scharf. Stephen Scharf, you're on. Okay, I unfortunately can't hear any volume from Steve Scharf. I will go ahead and come back to you. We have one more speaker on the list, John Geis. seems like our technical difficulties were relegated to the end here.
Hello.
Hi, John, welcome.
Yes, sorry for the confusion there. Hello, Mayor Paul and council members. I'm John Geis, a longtime Cupertino resident. My message is pretty simple. A lot of other speakers pretty eloquently captured a lot of the details. I, my message is, please stop delaying the Valco SB 35 project. As we all know, Cupertino needs a lot of housing and you, the council, need to be proactive in doing everything possible to build all types of new housing quickly. We live in Silicon Valley, a place where innovation and problem solving is celebrated in a unique way throughout the world. But housing innovation and housing problem solving does not appear to exist in Cupertino. It could and it should. An innovative council would be doing everything possible and even the impossible to build more housing quickly. Please be an innovative council. Sure, there are always problems, but the Please be an innovative council. Sure, there are always problems, but the problems are solvable. So let's not make excuses to slow down the project. Let's work to fix the problems and accelerate the project. Please be imaginative. Please be imaginative, think creatively, take bold actions in housing. Move the city of Cupertino forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll go back to uh Stephen Scharf.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Interim City Manager and City Attorney. I'm on the Planning Commission but speaking for myself. If you read the SB thirty five law, it explicitly permits cities to grant a one-year extension To an SB thirty five project, and I'm very glad the city attorney actually read the SB thirty five law because it appears that Many of the speakers here tonight did not. Nothing in the current SB thirty five law requires that a city grant an extension. I understand there's been lobbying for changes to the law, but those have not yet been enacted. Also, there was no lawsuit with any injunction that prevented the developer from proceeding with demolition or cleanup. And in fact, the property owner proceeded to demolish the west side of the mall and demolish the bridge over Wolf Road despite the lawsuit. The granting of a one-year extension is purely discretionary according to the SB thirty five law. The law states, and I quote, "The development proponent may request and the local government shall have the discretion to grant An additional one-year extension." And by the way, when the initial approval of an SB, while the initial approval of an SB thirty five project is ministerial and non-discretionary, The SB thirty five law never mentions whether the granting of the extension is ministerial, only that it is discretionary. All it says is that the local government shall have the discretion to grant a one-year extension. I appreciate Josh Salo of West Valley Community Services in a statement that extremely low-income housing Is desperately needed in Cupertino, and I think we all agree. Unfortunately, there is no, there are no ELI units in the SB thirty five project, zero. I think the three-year approval should be allowed to expire for multiple reasons. As the interim city manager explained, this project worsens Cupertino's jobs-to-housing ratio To the tune of thirty-four hundred units. The project is opposed by residents, major employers, and affordable housing groups. The project has zero affordable units for families with children. It's all small units. The site needs extensive cleanup of contaminants. And unlike several speakers, I don't believe we should simply build housing, weather market rate, or BMR housing on contaminated land. Please let the approval expire. The property owner can complete the cleanup of the site and then apply for a new SB thirty five project Or can decide to build something else. Also, please determine how this project was ever approved in the first place, given the site contamination And ensure that this kind of thing isn't allowed to happen in the future. Finally, it should be noted that Cupertino has never delayed approving housing projects Or denied building permits that a developer is entitled to. Westport, Valco, Marina, the Hamptons, Veranda were all entitled projects and were all approved expeditiously. So please do not renew this and also to call Cupertino segregated is about the most ridiculous statement I've ever heard. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Steve, former Mayor Scharf. Let's take this back to uh the panel with council. Well, this is a essentially an informational item. I will go ahead and see if anybody would like to uh bring forth commentary. Vice Mayor Chow. Um, you know, again, I apologize for cutting you off. Uh, it's that Um, let me give you the first opportunity to respond back. I know you had A a comment that you very much wanted to make, so let's start with that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, things will have a very long public comment period, so I think It's very important for us to address any inaccurate statement So that they don't linger in people's mind and further become misinformation. So ever since I got elected to the council, um, any update I've gotten with Valco from Valco is From through city manager. There has been no communication with any city staff Who have no idea who does plan track or who even works on the Valco project. There was zero communication. However, the SB thirty five law Does permit city council or planning commission to provide public oversight on the project, which The prior council in two thousand eight chose not to do. And I I'm glad that the this council um provide this opportunity for the council. I mean, this staff, this current staff provides this opportunity for the council and the community to An opportunity to provide oversight as questions. If we had done this, That many problems of expertise be certified would have been disclosed, which would have make the project Approval or implementation be faster. When you hide things, you have to delay them. So then now we are trying to disclose everything faster, that actually it help expedite the process. So don't think that this, I think the staff Is commendable that they have done a lot of work for the developer, which they should have done themselves. And and I'm amazed by reading the report that they have done so much and I And they had, they actually didn't write in the report on that, I think the council got Update earlier. There are a lot of resistance On on those work done, but this is the same process that every Resident who need to build anything would uh have to approve. And If I could share the screen. Um. Okay. Let me share. So one thing I'd like to ask Josh uh Salo was, I think If this were a project that's just have twelve hundred units of housing, I'm all for it. No one will be opposing that. But do you want to build it on a site with potential PCP poisoning? And then there are, we will be paying for them much later and people will suffer from that. Do you want this to be built on a site with P- PCE toxin that people will get cancer from? We all want to build affordable housing, but do you, are you willing to put people's life at risk? Because we want to build housing, we just want to build housing. And I think many people have said, actually Cupertino has been trying to be a good citizen. While other cities are building three times more housing, causing all these housing crisis. Cupertino has been trying to keep our job and housing balance below the county average. And you'll see that Las Gatos, Milpitas, Palo Alto, Santa Clara, Mountain View, Their job housing balance is much worse. They are causing the housing crisis and Valco project Has this so much resistance in Cupertino is because We are opposing to the huge amount of this is produced, not the twelve hundred units of housing, although we do One wish that this twelve hundred units for families. Like mentioned here, Cupertino approved Verinda project, no objection. Cupertino approved the Marina Plaza, one hundred eighty-eight units, no objection in two thousand seventeen. Cupertino approved the Hampton, adding six hundred units on top of three hundred forty-two in two thousand sixteen. No objection. And then we just approved the Westport, two hundred sixteen units, no objection. There are some minor Um, requirement, we are trying to make the project better, except that, but you don't see a lot of objection from residents.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Out of five, we approved all five.
All right, Vice Mayor Chow. Let let me, let me just follow up really quickly. Have we done anything to block the production of housing from any of these approvals that you just recited?
No, so we approve all of them. And what this council stands for, however, is we stand up to bullies. From our state, our um, we we have stood up for Lehigh cement, which the prior council didn't do. And this council approved special budget to fight for our residents against this big pollutants. And Valco is now a pollutant, therefore this council And this council couldn't fight, but then we are enabling the staff to 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 Spend time to make sure that whoever that disregards city rules Try to take advantage of residents. We fight for them. We stand up for them. This is what we are elected to do. Um, thank you. I'll make my other comments later.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, I have a few brief points Uh, in follow-up to some of the public comments that were made. First of all, I wanna thank Um, I wanna thank the 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 totality of the public commentary and the cut to public commenters. I I really Did hear an effort to, you know, keep things constructive and fair. Um, I I know that there are opinions on, you know, all all areas of the spectrum. But there are people that have been involved uh for a very long time with this project and, you know, in our community. And I do hear the effort uh to to try to have a Have a meaningful dialogue, so I, you know, I appreciate that. I I have some follow-up questions and and a couple of comments. First question, This is to staff. Have we prevented soil cleanup by blocking permits? You you know, I I it was, it was an allegation that was made at least once in public commentary. I I just wanna make it very clear whether this is accurate. Have we prevented, have we prevented soil cleanup by blocking permits? What what City manager or or city attorney?
Yeah. I can't believe that to be the clay case. If I'm wrong, I'll correct myself tomorrow. But I can't believe that to be the case.
I mean, does anyone on staff have a sense that that has been the case? Uh, you know, that that this city has, uh, P I C, you have your camera on. Did you wanna Uh, make a comment on that or, I mean, I I just, I don't know where this um notion originates frankly. Um, but I just, I I don't, I agree with um interim city manager Larson's um initial sense of it. I I don't see how that could be uh the case. Um, second, is anyone preventing a dialogue with the staff Um, with the applicant? To anyone's knowledge, has that happened in in terms of prevention of dialogue between our city staff and the applicant? And and again, I I invite anyone from from staff, but you you know, in deference to city manager and city attorney, if you want to take that.
I'll speak for the city manager and then the city attorney can speak for himself. I do believe that since I came on board in mid-July, I've tried to get my arms around the staff work Because it appeared that there was many just diverse conversations occurring that weren't coordinated and there Inadequate sharing and coordination of information to all parties who need to know that. And so I've stepped into a de facto project manager role um at this time and we're looking to cure that because I have lots of other work to do as well. And so, um, but we, so there has been more controlled communications. However, it's not been prohibited and we try to get responses back and we're setting up Regular meetings with the property owner to start plugging through the issues and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, and and do you get the sense from what you've seen, you know, thus far, that prior to you You know, and and we appreciate your logistical and administrative um insights and experience. Um, especially, you know, as applied to everything, but but this as well. But uh, do you get a a sense that any of your predecessors or any of the, you know, prior Um, staff or or even council was preventing dialogue between the applicant and the staff here?
No, what I've seen in this organization is an incredibly high level of responsiveness. That's a culture that's been ingrained over years.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You you know, I I I've sat through a a lot of A a lot of finger pointing and lectures, you know, and and so to the extent that, you know, it it's it's a matter of trying to um Indicate that, you know, there there's a certain uh uh amount of Um, of of heat, you know, and and I Commit and promise to to try to tamp that uh down, not just in um the the meeting, but but myself as well. I I take exception to the idea that responsible decision-making is the basis uh for Um, trying to cast dispersions at our community and and council. You know, the fact of the matter is, when we put forward a a very basic truth, and that's that We're faced with a state law that has been uh lobbied for, effectuated, and apparently at this point Uh amended, that in fact invokes a housing crisis to justify it. But actually, in the net total of its uh effects Makes that housing crisis worse. I if if we're gonna invoke responsible decision-making, I don't see how You can say that irresponsible irresponsible decision-making encompasses asking questions About whether this is justified. And I thank our staff, I thank our city manager for coming on And being willing to put that front and center. You know, this is a fundamental issue with our politics. It's the fact that we are kicking the can down the road. You see this in so many things. You see it in spiraling national debt. You see it in the fact that we end up thinking the ends justify the means. And ultimately, we're gonna be able to gloss over everything, you you know, and 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 be very happy. You 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 see it in the environment. And and so if nobody actually scrutinizes this, we're gonna be stuck here In another twenty or thirty years with an even worse crisis. And of course, at that time, if everyone goes about the same type of quality of dialogue, they're just gonna be finger pointing at each other And not taking these critical analyses and steps back and going, what can we do? Now, we're stuck with this, okay? I concede that. I also concede the fact that a lot of communities Uh, now and and in the past, will look at this project and go, you know, This is actually, you know, a job creator, it's a revenue generator. Uh, there are some interesting features to it. And yes, you know, uh, if you look at the absolute number, it's a lot of affordable housing, but You know, to take the fact that this community is concerned and is able to look at A a lot of these issues with a critical eye and turn that into some kind of a negative. You you know, respectfully, I'm not gonna use the term insane to describe it, but I think it's counterproductive. And at the end of the day, I don't see a single person that has raised issues with regard to the concerns here That should be uh characterized as someone that's obstructionist Or even contributing to anything negative with regard to the ultimate outcome of of this project. People should be thanking The people that are evaluating this and taking a critical eye to these issues, okay? Um, with regard to the idea that we are segregated And we are, you know, somehow some kind of really exclusionary community, I am really offended by that. I I'm deeply offended by that because, you know, I I I think that People look at us and think, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a very diversified demographic mix here. We are in many ways One of the most diverse communities, one of the most successfully diverse communities, and yet we're looked at, you know, frankly, we're picked on. And it really makes me sick. You know, it really makes me sick that people would come here and take Cupertino With an SB thirty five project where the applicant is required to take fifty percent affordable housing for the housing component. Whereas if we were actually one of the bad actors or the so-called, you know, cities that fall within Uh, the ten percent of the worst performing cities. Um, we would end up having only ten percent affordable housing. You know, these are hard numbers, folks. You you and this is a form of discrimination To go ahead and single out this community and say, oh, you're just bad actors. You're just a bunch of You know, people that are, you know, trying to block housing. We're not trying to block housing at all. So stick to facts. You know, you you stick to facts and you have a community of allies. You know, I I thank Neil uh McClintock, Neil Park McClintock, for pointing out the the socioeconomic stratification. You know, I greatly appreciate that, you know, I and and I think that that's a legitimate point. But the fact of the matter is, you know, this community has been persecuted and picked on. And I just don't see a basis for it, other than the fact that there is A a golden uh egg-laying goose kind of mentality that's going on here. And people think that they can look at our community and turn us into some kind of unjustified object lesson. And frankly, it's sickening. All right, if we need to do uh more to contribute to the conversation and the dialogue, we will absolutely do it, but treat us fairly. Because we are capable of producing results. We have a track record of doing so. And, you know, for the love of trying to resolve these problems, please stop with the rhetoric. Please start thinking and working with us to create these solutions. Councilmember Wei, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, I I would like to build on your comment, and I do agree that, um, you know, um, I think Cupertino is going to make an effort, and I am going to go back to this environmental health issues because we're here to really, um, you know, uh protect our residents for their health issues. Um, so my question maybe could not be answered right now, but it's a question that I would ask is, when I look at that Geo map, uh it indicated contaminated contamination going beyond Sears, going to Macy's, which is pretty far away from Sears Automotive. So I know we worry about the JCPenney site, but this question may not be able to be answered, but I'm actually worried about a residential site that's already there. They are actually pretty close to the sites that Geo uh map is pointing at. So is there any concerns over existing neighborhood that could have been contaminated? That just my concern because I'm worried about it, and then I, you know, look at, I think about JCPenney site, that's about, that's east side. How about the west and north side? That we have residential areas there already. So that's just just a question I don't think anybody could answer, but that concerns me. The second is, uh, I didn't have a chance to ask former mayor Mayor Shaw and of his comment, but I know this is recorded. Um, I know he's speaking for his own, but I am, I I would like to have a recording of what he says because I want to clarify, maybe I listened wrong. Um, I guess he did suggest let SB 35 project expire, the current one, and it's the second recommendation is that let it develop or clean up the site? So is it a presumption that this could be cleaned up and come up with another project? So I'm just recording a recording of it just to clarify because he is our former mayor, so I respect what he says, and also he is our planning commissioner, though he's uh vice chair, though he's saying for his own representing himself, but I just want to clarify, did I hear wrong? That is there a suggestion that this site can be cleaned up? But I, again, I want to go back to uh city manager, corrects, um, I I think he said we could trust the county environmental health is going to make sure either the site is cleaned up according to rules, so it's safe to be built, or it cannot be cleaned up, what's the next steps? So these are just my two questions. I know probably cannot be answered right now, but I would like to have a recording of what uh former chair um mayor says because I'm not sure what his suggestions are. Is it um, can we clean up for another project? Is that what is being suggested? But I think we should look into the county environmental health uh process and then we could go from there, whether it can be cleaned up or it cannot be cleaned up, and I think our options would have to follow that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Uh, I'll I'll take that as a request for follow-up from staff. At this point, interim city manager Larson, did you want to make any quick follow-up points on that before? Okay, um, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, um, so in getting to something more technical on impact fees, there is a request for the city to waive impact fees. Um, the current estimate is $125 million, but that's with the 50% credit given to the green roof if it qualifies for private open space. If they, it doesn't qualify, the total will be about $159 million, but um, the property owner is only willing to pay $38.5 million, and the difference, even granting the credit, is $86.5 million. That's over $4,000 per household for Cupertino. So this is privatizing the profit and publicizing the cost. Everyone will be paying more than $4,000 if we grant this fee waiver to Valco. Are we overcharging impact fees? There are specific uh government code on impact fees. Impact fees can only be charged on increased demand for public facilities as a result of the development project, and it has to be estimated the reasonable cost. The city has to justify every fee we charge. So that means if it's not paid, every resident will have to pay, and this fee is what helps the city grow. If we have sufficient fee for future infrastructure, we could accommodate more residents. Um, if we can have transportation impact fee, we can accommodate more traffic, more park, and more BMR housing fees. So why do we want to waive these fees? Ultimately, the fee, if reduced, would be passed on to every residence. Yeah, so I think the previous uh council did not provide oversight for the project. As a result, now we are seeing in this project, it's not just 1,200 units of affordable housing, it's 22 stories, 722-story towers overlooking Cupertino for a city. Our tallest building is a Juniper Hotel, that's about nine stories. So there's two times of Juniper Hotel, three times of Apple Park. Why would this kind of project be eligible for administrative approval? That's a question everyone should ask. How could this even happen? Did the previous civic city council um approve a general plan to allow this? They didn't actually. They, the the SB 35, the bill text took advantage of something that the city didn't do. As a result, the Valco site did not have um height limit, so they could essentially build a skyscraper there, and the city cannot do anything. It will be administratively approved. Skyscraper, that's the SB 35 project rule that applied to Cupertino. Is that fair? Is that good democracy? It's not. And plus, this SB 35 project is supposed to have two-thirds residential so that we can build enough residential for housing. Everyone here is for housing, right? So I hope if you are truly, truly, truly for housing, you should listen and really find out is house, does Valco project really qualify for how SB 35? So it has 2.7 million square feet of residential according to its plan, 1.8 million square foot of office, .4 million square feet of retail. However, if you add up all the residential units, it only accounts to 2.2 million square feet, about the same as the office plus retail, 2.2 million. It's 50/50. Why how come it's two-thirds? Because they account calculated 2.5 million square feet of residential amenities, including residential parking, mechanical utilities, a bunch of other things, and the green roof, but the office has zero amenities. Residential has more than 100% of amenity space, while they are giving us only 1,200 tiny studio units, 300 square feet to um 500 square feet of tiny units with nothing for families, when they could have easily enlarged the residential units to provide actual um 4.7 million square feet of residential use, then we could have 1,200 BMR two-bedroom units, but no, they didn't give that to us. So this is the kind of project you support. If you are really truly for housing, do you really support this project just blindly?
Vice Mayor, thank you. Hold on, hold on. Vice Mayor, I I need to do a time check, uh, just to check in with everyone. We have about 15 minutes uh to 12, and um I I'm committed to making sure that our meetings uh this year uh get done by midnight. So uh let me uh do a time check with people. Councilmember Moore, I know your hand is up. Did anyone else want to speak uh after Vice Mayor Chow as well? So Councilmember Willie, let me uh give us an allocation of about five till the hour, uh approximately 10 minutes, and then we'll need to divvy that up. Um, so Vice Mayor Chow, do you have an estimate for how much longer your commentary goes?
Um, I'll let everyone else speak.
Okay, and then with the remaining time, um, Councilmember Wei, did you have further commentary that you wanted to make? Okay, um, let's go to Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Willie. Um, you you know, I won't be exacting about it, but maybe three to four minutes each, and then we'll go back to the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Yeah, I I do appreciate that the uh the developers, architects spoke. I'm at their website right now, and their Spring 2019 Demolition Update states, "This April, we received an exhaustive 1,234-page report on the environmental condition of the Valco site from WSP USA, a leading environmental construction and engineering management firm. The report gave the Valco site a clean bill of health, confirms that the site is appropriate for residential use, and concludes that no further investigation or cleanup is necessary. To eliminate any remaining doubt, we asked the environmental consultant from the Apple Park project to conduct a peer review of these conclusions, and they concurred with WSP's findings. Copies of the full WSP report and the peer report are available here and here, they have the links respectively." And then the city, on their FAQ page, they posted the EKI peer review, which, and and this WSP report, and that is the last bit of information that we had until this past July. What we were told was that the site was clean and no more information was given to us. Then there was a peer review conducted by the city starting in May of 2019, and we were not given that information. Neither did the developer, who was receiving these reports, provide it to the public. So I would very much like to see the FAQs updated and fixed for the public. I think we've done uh, and the developer has have done the the community a complete disservice. The construction workers, the neighbors, and the future residents deserve to have a complete picture of the hazards on the site. The east side has, for no known reason, had zero soils tests, even though the JCPenney Automotive Center is still present and not cleaned and removed, along with the ice chalet and associated Freon 22 and oil in the mechanical systems. The adjacent site, as I mentioned earlier, 19333, Valco Parkway is deed restricted from housing or daycares, and there are no recent borings to determine if there was migration of contaminants to the site. We will continue to review and point out what we see as problems with the contamination. And now with our new council and consultants, we have a much better, we are in a much better place with regulators regulators involved to ensure the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So kind of the final comments, you know, we're here, okay, I'll speak for myself. I'm here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to represent the community, to make sure I do everything I can to protect them, that they can go to sleep at night and know their kids are going to be safe, not going to be exposed to contaminants. Who would have thought? But the fact that it is now known, that's our job, and we can't brush it a tide, we can't brush it under the carpet. We need to make sure that what needs to be done is going to get done, and we're not going to to turn away from our duty. Unfortunately, sadly, we're hearing that the developer did know of this back in 2016, and he didn't share. Maybe he didn't know the full extent, but he knew enough to share it with us and to then determine what needed to be done to get to an understanding for the whole site. Well, now we do, so that's what needs to be done. So the SB 35, different topic. So the SB 35, its goal is noble, produce housing. We in Cupertino, at least I believe, all five of us on this on this dais are representing the community and are here to approve housing project. Bring us your housing project. The Hamptons, these were done by the previous council, the Hampton 600, the Marina, uh, Main Street, just recently, Westport, 240 units, and we voted five to zero to approve it. Five to zero to approve it on a small site compared to Valco. Now, please note, that is 37% for-sale housing. What do you tell 2,400 families that you can rent these units, but you can never own them? I like the, I like the term Cupertino for All, and their their name, and I hope what Neil stands for, is very noble, Cupertino for All. All doesn't mean everybody wants to be in an apartment. It's up to the developers to look at the community and say, gee whiz, I can make money. I can make money on for-sale units, I can make infinite perpetu- perpetuaries of of income streams from apartments, and I don't ever have to give them the keys so that they can call it home. But is that the right thing? Is that the right thing for people to not have that hope? So we're here, work with us. The pre, one of the previous mayors reached out to uh the developer at Valco and said, you know, come, talk to us. And I asked him a couple times after that, did you get a response? No response. Work with the community. Look and see how many in the community really want to own their own home, how many really need to to be in an apartment. And then offsetting it with 8,700 workers that are now all going to stand in line? Some office space, yes, but when the, when the, when the the scale is so tilted, do you really blame? Oh, man. So so we're here, developer, we're reaching out to you, come and talk to us, but if you don't, that's fine, but make sure every safety precaution has got to be taken and make your project go as fast as possible with every one of those safety precautions. As we're hearing, our staff is working frantically to help the developer who who isn't rushing to clean up and and share the 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 information unless we force it. So all that being said, housing, absolutely. Housing for all, absolutely. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, um, very briefly, you'll have about a one-minute wrap-up before we go on to uh staff comments and future agenda items and.
So final word, I hope everyone who supports housing could tell the developer to follow the rules like everybody else, everything would go go along faster. And and then please tell all the other developers whose projects are already approved. We can only approve, developers need to build. So if you if you truly want to support more housing, find out why they couldn't build, what are the conditions? There are so many, many factors involved. If you truly care, look at those factors, not just blind people and and blind cities who are trying to do their best. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, well, I'm going to actually sneak in last word. Look, I think there are two things that we have to really be aware of right here. If you really care about the housing issue and making sure that we can spur production, I can tell you definitively with years of experience on council that you have to make sure that inclusionary zoning becomes a reality. It is like twisting arms and pulling teeth to get some to the point where they're willing to deliver on. to get some to the point where they're willing to deliver on these promises. And so the two projects that we've had in front of us tonight, they're good in that sense. They are inclusionary zoning. They're technically inclusionary zoning. I love to see them more interspersed, but one step at a time. Second, you know, we need a lot of money for transit infrastructure. There is a lot going on that's wrong with regard to how we've planned out, you know, transit and how we're going about effectuating it. I would say, you know, the fees are the tip of the iceberg. There is relatively an illimited amount of funding that we could put in to make appropriate infrastructure. So thank you very much. We stand ready to work with you, and we have been. You know, whether you realize that or whether you don't, or whether you appreciate it or whether you don't. In thirty years, your kids and your grandkids are going to live in a cleaner, safer, and better environment for the effort and the pain. And, you know, very frankly, the untoward and completely undeserved aspersions that have been cast by people that are doing the real work. So thank you very much. We'll continue doing that, and we look forward to great things from everyone, sincerely. All right, we're on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Let me start with our interim city manager Greg Larson. Did you have anything as a staff comment before I turn this over?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. My fellow councilmembers, I'm going to ask you to keep this constrained, encapsulate both your comments and future agenda items. If you don't have that ability within a minute, thirty seconds even, please relegate it to a written comment. You can email it to me. I will, you know, work on it with our city manager. Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember Wei.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. I really appreciated Vice Mayor's cross-sections that were shared of the project. However, the way that they put the parking garages in the project, the all of the underground parking, you have three point four million square feet of non-residential underground parking, which was not counted in the plan. And the above-ground, one point four million residential parking was counted towards the residential side. I'd like to see our municipal code for how we calculate square footage address this issue so that we do not have this inequity. And I've also noticed in the mentioning of the changes to the SB thirty-five law that they are working at making it so that you don't count anything that is underground. So it is truly tailor-made. If you look at who's supporting the project, you will see the developer's name on that amendment. No problem. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wei, followed by Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Real quick, I'd just like to get an update in maybe next council meeting about our city manager's search.
Okay, very good. I think we should be able to, yeah, have that information provided. Councilmember, was it Willie? Or, and then Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie.
So our city manager sent us an email with the quarterly update, I believe he's calling it, for the work plan items, which I think is great. I haven't read the updates yet, but I would be asking that for the top ten, that the city manager actually give an update at our council meeting. We, I feel we need to get the community more involved in telling the community to go to the website and go read the work plan when we've got fifty work plan items. Bring the top ten and share with the community what has been done with Lehigh, with Lawrence Snitty Park, the homeless jobs program. And I think we'll get more.
Good, good, good. Top ten list, we'll try to get to you in next meeting or in the first meeting in October. Vice Mayor Chow.
So there are many unanswered questions today. I think the staff couldn't answer a lot of the questions. So we'll wait, get another update later.
Okay, we'll follow on on that. That's a good question. We're at midnight. Did you have anything else? I don't want to open the door to an expounded dialogue. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I think that's a good bookend. You know, I thank everyone, you know, truly, you know, my theme this year is gratitude. I felt like it was the right thing to do to try to embrace that because it's the best common denominator to keep a harmonious community and get things done in a way that, you know, you sometimes have to absorb, you know, the slings and arrows, so to speak, but it's worth it for everyone in the end. So thank you very much for being a part of us, that endeavor with us, and I bid you a good night. And I will adjourn this meeting until September twenty-first. And bless you all, and we'll see you then. Take care.
Good night.
All right, good night.